The Capitol.
That's kind of familiar.
Yeah.
I always think it's like Christian Hees.
She might have been there too. But I'm just saying. But yeah, and just come down the steps and.
Were you there, were you there talking to representatives?
I was there for that. It was a local leaders day, mayor's there. But yeah, Senator Steven, a neat professional.
Oh, yeah.
My wife quotes out his dialogue every time she sees it. But you know, I'm sure.
Always going to hear that people.
They did.
These were good jobs, it seems like, yeah. He was trained well.
Oh.
And a grinnon.
Was it a grinnon? Grinnon?
Yes.
Yeah, one hundred percent.
Doug, are you ready?
I am ready.
Good evening. I'd like to formally call this meeting at the Mount Vernon City Council to order. And with that call to order, I would ask for, well, of course, talking about the agenda. Council Rose is on his way and Council West has told me a long time ago she's had a big year. So one aspect of one target, I guess you could say, in minutes. But for the agenda.
Better see if Officer Gerke.
It's not.
You better have a talk. Take it this time. Agenda, any additions or can we approve the agenda?
No approval of the agenda is presented.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Great. Mark. Two seconds to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication part of the meeting, is anyone here to address the city council on subjects pertaining to today's meeting agenda, please wait until that item is on the agenda. If you wish to speak to the council on item not on the agenda, now's the time to approach the podium and do so. Wait a few minutes. Anybody here? Working on it there, huh? Here are your communication items at this point. I will be others that are in the audience that'll be speaking to agenda items coming up. Moving to consent agenda, we've got four items, two minutes, licenses and planning and zoning appointment. Any questions about that consent agenda? No questions. Move to approve the consent agenda. Okay. And Paul. Move the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So sooner did I get the last open spot of planning and zoning field that Matt Snyder's has a resignation from Parks and Rec. So I mentioned.
Yes, and after, after the meeting, we can physically have a thought.
So anybody knows of anybody that's interested in planning and zoning, representative.
Parks and Rec.
Oh, sorry, Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec, yeah.
I'm confused enough.
No, no. Looking at Kathy George, if at all, we've got her, we're going there. Public hearing meeting. I will thank you. Welcome, councilmen.
Apologies.
So that's fine. Everybody wants to know if you had a ticket, that's what.
No, you can tell, you can tell Officer Gerke that I did in fact replace my tail lights.
He answered the ask over what I can.
See, yeah, see, he was already.
Moving on to public hearing, and I'll read this statement. Sufficial open to public hearing on the determination of an area of the city to meet economic development implied by the area, that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designing such a area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting amendment number nine to the Mount Vernon Urban Renewal Plan, which they have a public meeting open. Are we waiting for comments? Do you have anything to discuss, Chris?
No. This is the amendment that's necessary in order to utilize state financing for the pool renovations. Anytime that we do a project that is expected to be repaid with, it either has to be in the current urban renewal plan or we have to amend the plan. So this is the pool. The last amendment was actually for CHI, so. I don't see anything outside of this. It's pretty basic. It's. In the hope that we can use state financing for pool renovations.
And any comments coming to say all of those issues? Matt, for E1, the public hearing with regard to what eventually is pool, what made that new? I know you had a first meeting last week. Any comments about that?
None.
From the commission or from the public? For no one else here in the public to speak, I will close the public hearing and move to G1. We're ready for that. G1 is a resolution, which I read off earlier, three dash eighteen dash twenty twenty four A.
I've moved resolution three dash eighteen dash twenty twenty four A as presented.
If you call. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions about that? Otherwise, roll call, or roll call votes.
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving to resolution three eighteen twenty twenty four B, providing for stop sign locations within the city of Mount Vernon. Saw several resident comments that you included in the packet, chief. I don't think there's anybody here to speak for that.
I can just kind of overview it if you'd like, Mary.
Right ahead.
We just received a couple complaints about the new Spring Meadows addition, traffic driving through there. The stop sign at Sixth Street, Ashton Place and Spring Meadow Drive, right where those three streets combine. It's right next to the trailhead as well, so there was concerns about pedestrian safety coming around the curves. We conducted a speed study, which didn't show significant speeds, anything unordinary for a residential area. What I did discover was that there's about twenty some kids that get picked up by a school bus there at the trailhead every morning and dropped off later as well. So that was a kind of my bigger driving concern once I saw that they were using that. I spoke to the school district. They're in favor of, they had no, no issues. Obviously, making it a three-way stop intersection improves the safety for everybody from there. So I think the stop sign also decreased some of the speeds because they're going to have to obviously stop to go around further through the neighborhood, so I think it'll have a dual impact there as well. So I'd recommend the placement of two new stop signs, making that a three-way controlled intersection.
Two new stop signs at the same intersection. Mark, any questions, Mr. Chief?
I didn't sort of look at that. It makes complete sense. I mean, we're going to, there's a high chance of safer life there, so.
I sent letters out to everybody in that neighborhood. I've heard zero comments back, so, other than the two that initially instigated the conversation.
As long as there'll be more housing out there as time goes on. If there are no other questions, then I would move to approve resolution three dash eighteen dash twenty twenty four B, providing for a new stop sign in the said communication. Thank you, Craig. Mr. Second?
Second.
Scott on that? Move the second to move forward with approval of three eighteen twenty twenty four B. And Marshall, that's another roll call vote?
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving on to three eighteen twenty twenty four C, setting a date for meeting on proposition to authorize a loan agreement, issuance of notes to evidence that obligations of the city not to exceed one million dollars. And yeah, we do these one at a time for.
You do have to do one, each one of these one at a time. It is the one large borrowing that we've been talking about. These are max dollar amounts. This doesn't necessarily mean that you have to borrow this amount. For instance, the two point two five million is the pool estimated, the two million dollar borrowing. So again, these are all max amounts. If we don't put a max amount on there though, and say we only borrow two million and it ends up being two with overruns, ends up being two and a quarter, you couldn't just go out and borrow that extra quarter million.
You're going to find somewhere.
If it did happen in this resolution. So that's the basis why you see slightly inflated numbers outside of resolution C. The million dollars is for the water meter change out project. The two and a quarter should be the next resolution D is for the pool renovations. And then five, which is resolution E, that one point eight is for both Glen Street and the other infrastructure related improvements, of which only one project has been identified. There is a list if you look at it. I had it put in there, Fourth Street, intersection of Tenth and Summit. Work five different, different projects. That doesn't necessarily mean the council's tied into those, but for the purposes of this resolution, it needed to tie them to work and it would be done, so.
So to that point, if, in the eventuality of that, so we've got these five or six things listed, something else comes up that is a higher priority, if it isn't listed here, can these monies not be used?
As long as it's infrastructure.
So, so a road or a water main break that needs.
Yeah, what ends up happening is it depends on the payback. So if we use about seven fifty, if we use ninety percent of it for streets, then I would look to ROGU tax or loss to one of those combinations thereof to pay that. But if you use a half of it, say, on water, then I would look to the water fund to repay that. So it's just more, more so on the payback than it is anything. But you couldn't take a portion of that seven fifty and go and build.
Gotcha. Okay.
Question about the timing before, on the water meter, I know it's a multi-year project. Any chance of it starting this calendar year?
Better.
Okay, okay. And have you, have we selected a vendor yet?
We've not.
We've not. Okay, that's next step. But let's get to planning this first.
Yep.
Set the date for the public.
So the engineering has an RFP. That changed slightly because we moved away from SRF funding. So we don't necessarily have to be David's bacon and some of the requirements that come along with SRF funding. So they had to go back and free those the other direction. But yeah, I hope to select a vendor and have them start it by all.
Communicate that out to the public because that's.
That'll be, so the communication will definitely be going out. It's a big thing. They're obviously going to have to come in everybody's home to do this. So once the vendor is selected, it's a turnkey operation. We select the vendor, they're required to set up communication. We'll determine how they want to do that if we end up going by the quadrants that we've already established or our ethics. But we'll introduce the public avenues to the designers. They're more aware of what's actually coming through.
And are we looking for the same date, most likely the April one meeting for all three of those?
I believe so.
We know.
Yeah, I believe that. There's a one that's different. No, there's one, the pool might have it on me because it's a ten twenty.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifty would be the fifteen.
I think all three of them have a fifteen.
Oh, all would be on the fifteen. Are we just avoiding it?
I think we did that to keep it this, so it's all, all together. But the two point two five is for the pool, has a required ten twenty instead of a four and twenty.
Sounds good. Or any other questions or concerns? I would move that we set the public hearing day for resolution three dash eighteen dash twenty twenty four C for the April fifteenth, city council.
Scott, is there a second? Mark. Move the second to move forward, April fifteenth, date for public hearing. And I think that's another roll call vote.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to three eighteen twenty twenty four D, another date fixing for the pool project two point two five max. Has somebody kind of explained it? Any further questions about that component of it?
I will move to set the date of April fifteenth for resolution three eighteen twenty twenty four D.
Thank you, Mark. Second? I'll second that. Move the second to move forward, three eighteen twenty twenty four D. Marshall, can you call the roll?
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to the planning one. Kind of some cleanup street projects, trystic date for meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement, issuance of notes not to exceed one point eight five million. Of course, kind of already explained it. Any new questions?
I move we set the hearing for resolution three eighteen twenty twenty four E, the April fifteenth, city council.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
You are. Let's move the second to move forward, resolution three eighteen twenty twenty four D. Marshall, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes. We know there are appropriations are all business. Moving to motions for approval. First one is a claims list that Marshall looked sent out most recently this afternoon. Any questions, staff on that submission? Darren and I would move to approve the claims list. Do you agree?
Second.
Greg and Scott, if there are no questions, we're ready to move forward and then vote. If all of you are approving the claims list, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Attention, the application number thirteen on the police station renovation project. Council action as needed.
Pay application in the amount of thirty nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and thirty five cents. This was an oversight on their part. They sent it through their own email. So at last meeting, you approved the application fourteen and just skipped over thirteen.
Just kind of catch up item, one of the last ones hopefully from subject on from that police station project. Anything that they add, chief?
No, there, we passed final inspection today, so building permit, the building inspectors were down and signed off on things. So we'll have another meeting on Friday with, walk through with the architects for final punch list items. Many of the contractors have begun hauling their stuff out, which is nice to see. So it's good.
I'd move approval of the pay application number thirteen, the amount of thirty nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and thirty five cents.
If you call. Is there a second? I'll second that. Oh, great. No further questions of staff? Chief? Vote on approving the pay application number thirteen. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next pay application, our change order number sixteen, police station renovation project. So we went from thirteen to fourteen to sixteen.
It's a change order.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're going to say take out.
Fifteen.
Not, not to confuse you though, we did skip change order fifteen for now, only because we're kind of arguing over the dollar.
So is there a question on the?
Good catch. Very good, yeah. Well, I would move to approve change order number sixteen, which is moving an existing light pole nearer to the garage. I'll certainly second to discuss. Anything further to add to that, chief, other than, I'm going to accept my.
No, this is, just so you know what it is, it's the light pole that's on the west parking lot, the public side entrance, right next to the front doors. So without this pole, it would have been a little darker. It was borderline in the first place, but when they put the driveway in with the steep slope of the retaining wall and everything right there, they tried to cheat it as much south as they could to try to keep it as maintainable as possible, which encroached on the current location for that. So we had to move the base, which the city workers did, to replace the entire light pole. It's going to be over seven thousand dollars. So we moved the base and used the same light pole, put it back in. The city guys dug the hole and we got concrete put in for next to nothing too, so.
Good. Any further questions, chief, about that one? Are we ready to move forward?
Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
Bring the board on that. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public carries. Thanks for covering it for me there. Next discussion, sculpture trail, Mount Vernon Arts Council, to speak to that as well, so, Green's all yours.
Murray, if you could just push the button and the light should turn green. Up on top. There you go, yep. Perfect.
Okay. Well, everybody, I'm Marie DeFries. I'm with the Mount Vernon Area Arts Council and also a member of the Mount Vernon Sculpture Trail Committee. So two different groups. And I just want to say that the other, who the other members are. They are Bob Campana, who's the chair of Parks and Rec, and Daniel Charco, who's also a member of the Arts Council and a local business owner. Katrina Garner is on that committee. She's a resident of Mount Vernon. And Steve Marvis, who's here tonight, also a member of the Sculpture Trail Committee and a member of the Arts Council. And of course, Matt, we always include Matt in all of our communications, so we hope he reads our emails and is informed about what we're doing. I, I think a little background is probably appropriate, just to, it's a short history, so it won't take too long. In twenty twenty two, both Parks and Rec and the Arts Council started talking about a sculpture trail. And we came together and decided it would be a great partnership. So in twenty twenty three, we came to this, to the council and lo and behold, you thought it was a good idea as well and granted us ten thousand dollars for the first year, so that would have been last summer. The Arts Council also committed five thousand dollars and we also got a thousand dollars from some local residents. So with that money, we installed in August of twenty twenty three four sculptures. And I hope you've all seen those and enjoyed them. At the same time, we applied for some money from the state of Iowa and that arrived last fall. So we are now in what we call round two. So with that money and some additional money from the Mount Vernon Area Arts Council, we put out an RFP in January. And just last week, we met and looked at twenty seven proposals and really good proposals. And we selected a sculpture and an artist just last weekend. I don't know if you've had a chance to see that, but here's, here's what we selected.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah. And this is, her name is Amy Jacobson. She's an artist from the Kansas City area. And, anybody else? So that just happened very recent. We're just working on a contract now with Amy. And she has said that she can have this ready for us. It is a commission. It's not an existing piece. The pieces we bought last summer were existing pieces, so we, that was pretty easy. But this one is commissioned. She's done other works similar to this, but this one is called the Dragon of Pon Creek. And it's an eight foot stainless steel dragonfly that's flying through some tall grasses. So the committee didn't have a, we spent a lot of time on it, but we all in the end agreed that this was, this was appropriate for the trail. So that would be installed by the end of June and that would be underwritten, as I said, by a grant from, from the state of Iowa, Economic Development, which now houses the Iowa Arts Council and, and our Arts Council. So that's how that one's being funded.
Do you mind asking how much that is?
So this is going to be fifteen thousand as well.
And that's all being funded by the Arts Council?
Well, ten thousand from the state art council, state, and five thousand from the local arts council.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Murray.
And I also want to call out Eldon Downs and his crew because they, they poured the concrete bases for the sculptures last summer and installed them. And so, and it was, it was easy peasy and I just still grateful for that, so. Give a shout out to Eldon on that one. So now, tonight, we're here to ask for an additional ten thousand dollars from the city, work from the FY twenty five budget. And that will underwrite what we call, are calling round three. So that's how we got from last summer to next summer. And I think you should have, I, I, I sent, or we sent a memo, the sculpture community sent this memo in November. And it, it does have a case statement included with it. And just to refresh you, never. Anytime Steve or Matt, if you have something that you want to add, jump right in there. But the case statement, you know, lays out a five-year plan. And our, our idea initially was that we would have one sculpture every year, but because we bought existing sculptures last year, it worked to our advantage.
The sculpture from Colorado that was the, and it part of the initial group has not arrived yet. Is that correct? Or am I not right, just missed it?
Well, it's, well, that's the one that's right on Main Street. It's called Girl and Hawk. And she's, the girl, she's right on, it's right on the, on the corner, First Street. And then there's the three other figures that are behind the girls, Hawk. Actually, we, we have thought about moving the Girl Hawk to another location, but that's another story.
Am I right that the, the singular one is on the north side of Main Street and the other three are in the south?
Well, that was our original plan, but then at the last minute, we had to put them all on the same side because there was, we didn't have a right of way.
Land ownership.
And so that is another issue that we'll have to think about because we're thinking about the sculpture trail in three sections.
Nature Park, the section where the current pieces are, and then on the other side of Main Street. So.
So that leads me to a concern with the placement of these. Nature Park is Nature Park and it's been Nature Park for as long as I've been in the community. And the thought of installing things in Nature Park sort of is contrary to what the concept of Nature Park has always been. So is the plan to actually place art into the park?
The current, go ahead. I'd say the current plan that I know it is to continue to place sculptures along the section between First and Third. I think it's called Third, right? But not actually go into Nature Park. There was conversation, or has been conversation about if the west entrance to Nature Park, where St. John's Church is, I don't know what street that is, Seventh?
Seventh.
If that was improved going into the park, that might be a possibility, but that has not been decided on. And again, obviously, this would be a council decision. But that's been talked about. But also, as this continues to grow, we have some issues with land ownership and right of way and sewer utilities going north on that trail. Till you get to about the skate park, and that might be a possibility. And going even further north into Elliot Park might be a possibility. But we've also talked about as Bryant Road might be developed into a trail at some point in our, in our urban, that we could continue this up into that area as well. So there's opportunities more than just this that we're looking at. So yeah, that's, I understand your concerns. We do have a concrete trail and some lights in there now. Let's change that scope of that park a little bit. Disc golf course, dog park.
Well, the disc golf course and the dog park are additions to the original quarry in Nature Park. So the, when I talk about Nature Park. So, the, when I talk about nature park, I talk about the original nature park. The concerns I have is with.
The, the park itself?
The park itself, the old park, parking park. I think something like this would be appropriate as an entrance on Seventh, within the, within the dog park, maybe there's somebody that wants to make a giant fire.
That'd be great, yes.
And, you know, perhaps a few along the trail. I think that's a great idea. For me, there's sort of a sanctity of the original nature park. Of course, my biggest concern is that, and it's rather ironic that you're calling it lost trails money, because when we spend it on art, it's lost to trails. And the lost funds, local auction sales tax funds were for trails. When this project came forward initially, I spoke out against it. Not the concept, but the funding mechanism. I struggle with spending money that's earmarked for trails. And I believe we can improve some existing trails. And I believe there are areas where we should add trails. And every time we spend $10,000, we reduce our budget, which is now what?
So cash-wise, I have, and there's about $188,000.
So, that's my struggle. And I lost that battle. And once the majority of the council agreed to spend that money on art rather than trails, I supported the art because it is a good project. But I will again speak out against using local auction sales tax funding for art on trails when I believe we should work more toward making our entire community more pedestrian-friendly. I support the concept, not the funding, just to be clear. Thank you.
I guess I'm just trying to clarify, so we did phase one. Phase two seems to be covered by state funding, is that correct?
Correct, and local, and local arts council.
And local arts council. So you're asking us for phase three?
Pardon?
So we're being asked for phase three right now?
Yes. Because you're looking at FY25 funding.
Yep. Okay.
So we're just trying to stay ahead of.
Marie, will there be additional funds from Mount Vernon Area Arts Council for round three?
Yes.
So we're not funding it all?
Yes. And last time, in round one, we did get some funds from some private citizens. And we anticipate that will, that will probably hit some more. So, we're just trying to keep it going. And speaking to the other sections of the trail, that's way down the road. And, you know, every year it's going to be a different presentation because we just, we never know about the funding, we never, you know, how much emphasis there will be to continue it. But we're hoping to at least get that middle section completed in our lifetime.
Marie, is the middle section the?
Well, I call it the middle section, but.
After, for, when you cross First and go through the woodsy area to the skate park?
No, that section is, I'm just talking about the section that we've started. Between nature park and First Street.
So, so more art along that trail?
Yeah, yeah. And it's possible that we may move some pieces as time goes on. And that's, it's not, it's doable as long as Eldon sticks with us.
So we call, we call that section Petrick Trail.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, Petrick's on the south and, and Solid Trail is on the north side of First.
Petrick?
Yes, Steve. Would you?
We do have people online, so it's important that we use the microphones.
Steve, come on up, please, yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
This is Mike. I just wanted to note that we are committed, the current existing Sculpture Trail Committee is committed to diversity in the pieces. And so, the first four pieces were painted metal. This one is going to be a stainless steel. And we certainly hope that we'll get some stone and some other materials in there as well. We don't want to have wussy, choosy, crazy kind of thing, so.
I appreciate that. But I will say, the sculptures that are there now are, I think, fabulous. And I really appreciate that, I agree.
We would argue that it's brought more people to the trail. People that had never been on the trail before, they, they went down there just to look at the sculpture. So that's kind of the part of it, too, is just trying to encourage people to use the trail.
And I, I think Paul's point is, is well-taken when we earmark money for something, using it for that thing. And while in, in a realistic sense, we're writing a check to an arts council, which does seem outside of that trails bucket. The fact that it's, it's being used to, in my mind, enhance the trails and theoretically and I think realistically bring more people to the trails is, to me, the justification for moving forward with the funding. And I, I maybe take a more expansive definition of earmarking things for trails. To my, to me, it isn't just, you know, the moving the earth and paving them and doing that. It can include enhancements outside of just the physical trail itself. So that's where I would fall in that financial conversation.
So Chris, does it have to come from that, the lost source? Unless you can come up with a very creative.
Parks and, Parks and Rec, in general, come out of the general fund, ask to be, ask to fire it. That is, that is the location that the state kind of puts under attack here in your house. So, if you're asking me, the answer is yes. It's local auction sales tax or there's no funding for this FY25.
So, my sort of comparison is we have a local auction sales tax. A portion of that is set aside for, is it streets and infrastructure?
Two more categories. You have streets and sidewalks, trails, downtown streetscape, and then the LBC, basically.
Okay. So, the equivalent for me is that we take money out of the streets fund to erect signage. And so now, instead of fixing the popple on a street, we're putting up signage. Or we're putting up a work of art. We, we use that to pay for our wonderful solar system. And I will not all argue that that's not a wonderful solar system. However, the, the funds were voted for, you know, streets. And, and so that's where I, I'm a little, I'm a little more in tune to the specifics of what was presented to the voters as use of the funds in each category. And I, I, you know, my first experience with this is when we brought forward the local auction sales tax for the development, planning, development, and construction of a community center and fire station. And we purposefully did not account for a percentage to go to either one. And I believe that that was the right thing to do when we did that because one became shovel-ready before the other. And I believe what we did with the funding at the time was the right thing to do. We spent more on the fire station out of that fund, but left enough in the community center fund to serve as the seed money for what is now the open city. So, we, we have to remember that when we put a ballot issue on the ballot in front of the voters, that we are committing to utilize those funds for what we say on that ballot.
Chris, remind me again the four categories. Streets and sidewalks?
Streets and sidewalks, downtown streetscape, trails, and the LBC, the community center. So, here's the challenge with the local auction sales tax. It is a finite amount of money. So the, the sales tax has a sunset. They're only going to collect X amount of dollars for each of those categories until 2034. So, as I explained to Mark before the meeting, it's like a checking account that doesn't get deposits. Once you spend it, it's gone. So, there's truth to the comment that once you spend these funds, they're gone and gone forever. They are, they don't replenish. They replenish year after year. So for instance, trails gets about $5,000, gives a total of $60,000 a year. That's it. Up until 2034, you can do the math and figure out how much is going to come in into trails. That's one side of, you know, I think what I'm hearing council person to make comments on. And then the second is, it, it's all about objective or, you know, how you view something. If we were to, to bid out a trail, a project that had benches, lights, art, everything, that would all be considered part of that individual project. You can use local auction sales tax for that entire project. It's a little unorthodox to probably look at art outside of actually doing the trail project, but it is along the trail and fits that category, so. But I don't have, the city does not have funding mechanisms for these types of projects outside of local auction sales tax. And probably, I mean, if you look at the, the trails plan, you have a tenth of the amount of money necessary to build the trails to go with that sort of plan.
Remind me, where did the money come from for the sculpture and the LBC?
Came out of the LBC.
Which, we are.
It came out of lost. Well, trails and art and sculpture walk are tangible, are tangible examples of the council and the members of the city of Mount Vernon shaping the culture of the community. And slightly different direction from what Paul was saying on, the voters voted for this money to be used in this way. I think that the voters also voted for us to be good stewards of helping to shape the culture of this community. And as a result, I think with its close relationship to the trails currently, that the sculpture walk would, in my mind, fall into the category of, of good, good use of lost funds.
Definitely another example of, this is from Mount Vernon, you know, you've got a variety of artists from a variety of locations, a variety of mediums, as you pointed out. Very appropriate as we get to the next topic in our agenda here, which is kind of a more media-modic butterfly topic, but.
So is this a point of discussion tonight, or are we looking for a motion?
Motherland or the other?
So it's, it's on here for a possible motion. You don't necessarily have to make a motion yet. Fiscal year 25 doesn't start until July 1. Local auction sales tax doesn't go away at the end of fiscal year. So it's a little different than, than others. You could entertain this at a later date if you want. You can make a motion to approve the $10,000 request and it would just be included in the fiscal year 25 budget.
Or at a lesser amount?
You can.
The interesting thing here, and I appreciate it, Marie, giving us the history to start with, start this discussion. The first year, the city stepped up and paid for a large chunk, as did others. The second year, you didn't ask us for anything because you were able to receive it from the arts council and then a state entity, it sounds like. And this year, you're asking, in addition to the arts council, for the city to come back again in year three to assist.
Right.
So we did it last year, so it's like a never.
Right, so, and I would, I would say that one of the reasons that we received a grant from the state is because they saw that we had initiated, the city was a partner, we had initiated the trail. It wasn't like they were just like, oh, they don't even have anything there yet, because we have.
They're not fans of the theoretical.
Yeah.
They like the fact that there's.
Like, oh, it's an actual trail, right? So I think that, that helps. Get the funding from the state, so. What, that's good. Well, it was worth $10,000, so.
I, besides with Paul on the bottom line, but for a different reason of, of this discussion. And that is, do we need to go through a budget cycle with the changes, legislative changes that have been put upon us this budget year before we commit to something that is not hot-holed? Yes, this is from Mount Vernon, but.
I mean, the counterargument to that is every year the state's going to throw something new at us. So we've now, I mean, you can make that, it, it's a point we'll take, but you could make that argument every year, you know?
First year's going to be the easiest to survive, the second year and third year.
And if I could, I, I would be honest with you, I would have just told the arts council no if there wasn't a designated funding source. So here's the trick with, and this is the hardest thing for me to explain to you citizens. I sit here and look at about 40 different accounts, all with money. Some with varying degrees of being able to use them for different aspects of the city. This in particular, local auction sales tax can't be transferred to other funds because it was a voted effort by the populace. So, if you were to change or take these portions of local auction sales tax and use them in other locations, you would actually have to take it back to the people as a vote. So, those four, those four segments, those four categories that I listed are set until 2034. And it's, one of the other items that I would point out, too, is, is the money doesn't disappear after 2034. It stays in those, but it has to continue to be used for those four categories. Even after 2034, you still couldn't just take that money and put it in, you know, the general fund if you wanted to. That's not how these work. So, of all of the areas, this has the most defining use for funding that we have, so.
Am I right in thinking that this was just recently re-approved for 10 years? Or was it, am I making that up?
Cedar Rapids, maybe.
Cedar Rapids.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so.
Mount Vernon City is 20 years ago.
Okay, so ours was 10 years ago. Okay, gotcha.
So, this discussion does stir in me an interest in what the Parks and Rec Committee is doing with the trails plan.
With trails?
Yeah, I mean, we have a trails plan. And it'd kind of be nice if we were talking about spending trails money on trails, but we haven't had anything brought forward.
Yeah, we, we built two trails recently, which took a lot of that money away. So we're trying to replenish that fund because we don't have other, well, we're doing a barn for the pool and some other things.
Yeah, can you remind me which trails?
Well, one that's had a lot of discussions, the inner urban, going up Bryant Road to the city limits. city limits.
And that sounds a bit.
Nature trails, like the lion's share of the capital on hand. So, one of the challenges with local option sales tax is I haven't brought to the council a bar open based upon local option sales tax, mainly because that's what I inherited. And so, the streets and sidewalks portion of the local option sales tax was spent for leverage before I got here. So, until 2031, you don't have a streets and sidewalk local option sales tax. It goes for a bond payment, two actually, ever here. So, I avoided writing down to you till lepers, those dollars against the future. So, when we had enough money to do nature park, which I think was like 200 some thousand, we waited until the local option sales tax fund hadn't accumulated that much cash and then we bid out the project and sold.
And I'm in favor of that kind of spending on this, these types of projects.
We have the trail, like runs along the dog park, we've done the ground work. We also have a trail identifier that comes back and potentially connects the south and the north with some of the development that's occurring.
You're speaking of overage?
Yeah. So, we have segments that are identified now. I would tell you that if Lynn County Conservation came into my office tomorrow and said they made a lot of ground on the inner urban and that has become a priority, then all of the money from here until 2034 probably gets shifted to that connection.
Because that's an economic tool.
So, our crystal ball is always a little cloudy just because things tend to change quite frequently, but that's kind of where we're sitting. As far as the trails plan, some of that's been enacted by the developments. So, Palisades, up through Stone Brook, connections back. The other trail that was put in the trails fund was the LBC to the high school, back to Palisades, that connection to the tennis courts. We received a hundred thousand dollar grant.
And we spent a hundred thousand.
And we spent a hundred thousand trails for that. So, those are the two trails that have been done most recently that probably depleted those funds, but yeah, I mean, usually when we get to about 200,000, 250,000, then we start to, I start to give Matt the green light and say, okay, the next segment can probably be looked at.
So, it's spring to metal, right? So, that trail was part of the development?
Mm-hmm, as is Stone Brook. So, the from 17, just outside of 17, up Palisades, that will actually go all the way up to third when the development is done, but that is put in by the developer.
In Stone Brook, we negotiated instead of parkland being a part of the designation, we traded out the trails, which we can do through our reserves.
Right, yes.
So, once that gets more fully developed, you'll see more trail. There's already one that's there, but there'll be more throughout that neighborhood, which will be nice, that we won't have to spend any money on them.
But it's a bill of pardon designated?
Yeah, but that was donated by the donors, it wasn't.
That's right.
It wasn't part of.
Thank you, it wasn't part of what's currently being developed.
Correct.
Great. That's an excellent use of that portion, developers' portion.
Of the order.
Yes, very, very good, excellent, thank you.
What's crossing my mind is that, as we're talking about some of these trails that have been put together for 50,000, 100,000, 200,000, that some percent of that cost would go for lighting, would go for cement, would go for leveling, equipment, labor, and art as well. And so, if 10% of each trail project would include something set aside for art, a $100,000 trail would have $10,000 for, in this case, a sculpture walk on that. And I'm not saying that that's the right number, but it's, there's certainly precedent out there when the state of Iowa builds a building, they'll say, well, one tenth of 1% of this 100 million dollar building needs to go, include art. And so, to make sure that there's sculpture or paintings or aren't hanging and present. So, can't help but think that. The second thing I was thinking is, with the initial 10,000 and the 10,000 that's being requested again for this year, are we including or have we included the labor Eldon's team put into that, or was that on top of it?
Because.
Because that is quantifiable as well, certainly in a per hour basis of materials.
We probably don't want to quantify.
Yeah.
Public grid.
And we're very great, we are so great.
That's not a candidate.
Okay, Chris.
Remind for me and you.
I think we did it on the grid.
Craig, I could agree with you if that was part of the initial planning when, you know, 10 years ago when things were laid out, but the language was, and the intent at that time, having been involved in that, was pretty clear. You know, that's not to say that the next time we have a local option sales tax and whatever council is putting the language together, they don't want to do something like that, but you know, and again, I'm not against art on the trails. I'm just, I get squeamish when money sort of out of.
But I think there's a really close connection between landscaping, for example, as art and part of a trail project, and sculpture as art and part of the trail project. Put a tree in, put shrubs in, put flowers in, put art in.
To Paul's point, I would be curious what the actual language was that was voted on 10 years ago.
The question was pretty simple. Each section had a percentage that went with it. And when I say that those categories are those categories, the question wasn't even more comprehensive than that as far as what was being voted on. Here's the challenge with us being 10 years removed from a vote. So, there's a lot of discussion when the question is actually put together by the council. I'm sure you could go back in and read the archives of the sun and get kind of the gist behind those items. Then, there is the perception of the individuals that are actually voting on it, what they feel like falls into each of those categories. And then there's the city council that has 20 years in which to say, bring over these funds, but to a certain extent, you have control of these funds for a 20-year period. I would tell you that I feel comfortable enough that the trails would come from these dollars, but that's not up to me. My recommendation is if you want to do this, this is where the money would come from. And yes, if we were to start a project today, if we wanted to include trash receptacles, lights, art, whatever we wanted to put along that landscaping along that trail, would all be included in one project and not be paid for from that fund.
Yeah, I guess part of my point in mentioning that is when, at least in my understanding was, we're sometimes intentionally squishy about the language so that we don't, I mean, I would argue that we, that when the language was put together at the time, that it wasn't trails and then an inclusive list or an exclusive list of what we meant by trails.
It was.
So that, right, so that 10 years from now, if we want to put 10 grand of art in and call it trails enhancement, which I honestly believe it is, we can do that because we don't have a list that we point to and says, well, it can only be gravel and dirt moving and paving and, you know, that's it.
I'd argue that this isn't squishy enough. Most communities would say 50% goes to property tax reduction, 50% goes to capital projects.
Right.
Here, I think there was, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think there was some identified needs and there was some concern that the city councils may reallocate those funds if we don't at least get individual.
Put some buckets together.
To those terms. Once these run its course and the state hasn't taken local option sales tax away from us, that would be my recommendation, property tax reduction and then capital projects, and it would just be open ended.
Well, it was also very specific because it was what the community would support.
Yeah. There was a. I recall a concern that it wouldn't pass if we didn't.
Correct.
Put some parameters or, at least a wireframe on it.
But you did, outside of them wanting to know to you permission of art or be prepared for fiscal year 25, you can either make a motion tonight to approve this funding or you can wait. We still have until June 30th in this fiscal year, so if you have time, if you want to see, make a decision. I don't have another location for funding outside of.
Yeah.
Thanks for your patience.
Discussion, I appreciate it. And I was going to just throw in a little more background, and that is, we did put a survey out last spring, and there were 168 responses, which I thought was pretty good because Parks and Rec, you know, put it out there and 168 people responded, and we asked about, what did they think of this sculpture trail and should it have a theme? You know, it had five or six questions. The fact that 168 people answered, I was shocked about, and a very small percentage, I can't even remember, even Matt does, how many said, well, why is the city spending money on sculpture? A few people did say that, but most of that 168 were positive and they were excited. So, just throwing that out.
What is the whole of the council on this topic? You've got a couple of choices, we can do nothing at this point, wait, we can already make a motion second and then put it to a board or the group public there. Pause a second, see if anyone wants to make a motion or whatever. I don't know if I can wait longer or not, but, and I'm going to interpret a pause as meaning a pause like in, let's wait a quarter or whatever, but I won't interpret the.
I think eventually, because it's a funding request, you'll have to make some sort of determination. Not making a determination tonight is fine, we still have fiscal year 25, but at some point, a formal request has been made and we'll have to. This is, when it's the general fund, I can easily go back to groups and say, I don't have it, here's going to be, and it gets approved with the overall budget. It's a little bit different because there's a different funding mechanism for this, so at some point, I would ask if you make a decision, but the government's going to have to.
Yeah, just struggle with it, and I know that we're going to need trails on the road. I'd like to see her first.
I would.
Two installations.
I would rather than we table this to give council as a whole an opportunity to further look into.
Got a motion by Paul, table, is there a second table?
Do we actually need to table it?
On the agenda, it's easier to table it and leave it on the, and then it just goes that way, kind of there.
I would rather do that.
I don't want to.
It goes up in the, I would second that motion.
So, it's Paul and Scott to table that motion. Be you clear with that, Marshall?
Yeah.
Okay. We're, we're voting on the motion, seconded, table the sculpture trail, trail funding request at this time. We're ready to vote, it's a voice vote, all in favor of the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so it's tabled for now. June, is that appropriate time for it to be brought up again?
Oh, I would, I hope before then.
Yeah, it's tabled.
I know you've said in here that she wanted to install it by the end of June, so before fiscal year.
Well, no, that's for the second round, and we're good with that, but this is for FY25, so.
Yeah, this is for something we don't have in front of us yet.
Got it, okay, the dragonfly is second round.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
And I think it's a wonderful choice.
It's awesome.
It will, it will stay on your agenda under old business. It'll be, until you decide to pull it off. Now, yes, I would ask to not stay on the agenda for the city. That's selfish of me, but.
That's fair.
I second that.
Well, yeah, that would, to your point, the formal question's going to be, and it would be unfair for the arts council to live in that limbo as well.
Yep. Just pass on where we're at to the rest of the council.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the discussion.
Thank you.
Next item of this discussion, consideration of no mow May and monokarate plantings. Council actually is needed. This is a result of last sustainability committee meeting, I mean, the first day, before that sustainability committee meeting, I think a couple of meetings since then, and also, planting and zoning, Graham Carl, I think, came up with the connection with monokarate plantings, pollinator zone program in Cedar Rapids under Clark McLeod, and number of understanding that with the monokarate research project. So, I think I'll just stop and turn it over to Gretchen if you want to speak to that topic here.
I have my signage too.
Props, all right.
Yes, yes. You can get signage for free through AmeriCorps.
Paul, you're reading.
Good Neighbor Iowa. This says, this says freedom lawn, no lawn weed killers used here, www-goodneighboriowa.org. They're out of the University of Northern Iowa. Our rep for Green Iowa AmeriCorps, Corey Lewis, will provide signage for anyone who's considering no mow May or slow mow summer. So, and we just have to decide how we'll get those signs to interested folks, but I know it's a small sign, but you can get, there are several versions of this Good Neighbor Iowa signage that would tell you that you're choosing some other kind of lawn other than using weed and feed or herbicide pesticide, that you're going to support pollinators, the ground, the, yeah, the ground pollinators that hibernate, the ground hibernators that come out of the ground, late April, I mean, we're still hovering on a normal season, but late April, typically May, are the ground hibernators come out and their first food sources are, they need to eat right away the high calorie, and that tends to be dandelions. The dandelions are kind of like the Big Macs of the food chain, and it's not what you want your pollinators eating all year long, and the dandelions usually don't last all year long, so maybe there's a kind of a yin and yang there, but once your dandelions go to seed, it's usually kind of what, middle, late May, and then you can, and then you can mow. So, it's kind of a fuzzy, it's fuzzy math, but typically you don't want to rush and mow the last week of April because again, you're going to disturb the ground hibernators, the pollinators, it'll be, they're waiting to come out, and then they're coming out in May to find food sources, and so you don't want to, you don't want to mess with that, you don't want to scare them or hurt them, so you don't mow, and your neighbors might think that you're, you don't care about your property anymore, that you're not, you don't value your property, but it's kind of a shift in thinking about sort of the broader conservation. You have your little plot, your own yards, and you can mow some of it, and then other parts of your lawn, you could designate as your wildflower pollinator habitat, and it could be, you know, literally just the size of this chair starting out, and you could put your signage, you know, there, or you could put your signage on the parts that you mow right on the edge, so people know you do care. that you mow, right on the edge, so people know you do care about your property and your property has value. It's just you're kind of shifting the idea of the value of your property toward supporting a broader pollinate, pollinator habitat, green spaces. So, so on behalf of Mount Vernon residents who are interested, I'm asking the council to continue no mow May, the pilot program we started last year, and maybe roll it into an annual event. I don't know what concerns you, the councilors, heard about no mow May from last year, but I hope if we share the concerns, we can find solutions. The slow mow summer part of this is, you know, completely optional, but a lot of people are interested in learning more about native grasses, native plants, that I guess the Kentucky bluegrass is not, not really a native, so most of the green grass that people are getting or planting is considered, you know, has very short root systems, so it's not really as good for, you know, the, you know, to get a big downpour, you know, it's gonna wash out easier.
In comparison
Yeah, in comparison to the, the native grasses have really long roots and, and so they're really good for rooting. So, but again, by doing no mow May, you're not mowing as much, so you're thinking about, well, how do I wanna, you know, what am I gonna do to landscape my, my property? What can I do differently? You're not, you know, you're using your mower, you're not either plugging it in or using the gas for it, you don't have the time, you're not investing your time in doing that. And for the city, for citywide, this other project that, that I think the council already agreed they would take on this year is with Monarch Butterfly Project, Monarch Research Butterfly Project. They have the goofiest name, but they're in Cedar Rapids and they are willing to provide seed for the city. They just need to know a set amount of feet that we would designate, and once we get them those measurements, they'll provide seed. I mean, it's almost that easy, I guess, and then we have to hold in your team to help. But, but the upside is, you won't be mowing as much, and once we get prairie grass, wildflower habitat, in various places, and speaking of the trails, since there was all that grubbing going on over along that trail, I can't remember the name of it now.
Petrick?
Petrick, is that after somebody's
Yeah, the Petrick family owned that thing.
Okay, how you spell that?
P E T R I C K.
Okay.
It kind of remember.
Well, that area is very beautiful. I walk it every day with different, my dog and other dogs, and so we love it that it's got all of the nature there, and so that area that was grubbed, we're hoping to put in some native seeds for planting in that area, so we can get some more, because right now it looks really bare, but, but we'll get, we'll get some growth back in there and it'll be really beautiful. I don't know if any, if you guys gone through there yet, seen the grubby? Well, and also along First Street, the slope down, not Petrick, but
Solder.
Solder, okay.
We're talking about the robot that you put in there
Yes.
And the pictures
Yeah, that's an amazing machinery. But, yeah, so that side, First Street, before you, before you get to the V, is bare too, so you can see the trail both ways, you can see a lot more. It used to be more like walking the trail, it felt kind of like hidden, a little more hidden, but
Matt, have Parks and Rec or in conjunction with Public Works, or have locations for the Monarch Pollinator Project been identified? We've identified a few. Okay. But we also haven't communicated with Public Works on those, or who's gonna do the work to prepare those, so we have not had those discussions, so, yeah.
I think the conversation has worked just a little bit, so we have, Darryl is, is actually working on some seed mixes for us, both under the Monarch Project, and then part of this seed, where we did some of that work, they're different seed mixes. So some of the items that council needs to be aware of on no mow May, we don't really have that in our ordinance, basically staff just suspended enforcement of nuisances during the month of May. The only complaints that I would say that we really received last year were, there were a couple residents that were probably slow to the punch to mow after, after the end of May. But other than that, I don't remember receiving a ton of complaints from them. The second is the possibility of the council having to change ordinances, and most of the prairies survive, not necessarily with an annual burn, but they do do much better with at least some sort of burning that occurs. From the city's perspective, I would reach out to the fire department and use this training exercises for those that live near them. It will be a matter of educating them and make sure that they keep their windows closed when this is occurring, because it is thick, it is black, and it does ignite and burn really quickly. And Darryl, like I said, is working on some various seed mixes, so along the solder and Petrick Trail, that's kind of a forest mix. And she showed me a thousand seed variations that you could have with each of these mixes, but we're relying on them, on the expertise as far as the seed mix is concerned. As far as the project that we have, we've talked about some places in nature park, we've also identified the front, part of the front section of the police department, there's a wide swath of green. My comment back to them is, if it takes away a mowing position in the summer, then I'm happy, because we're mowing less, less property. So, within the subdivisions, there's possibilities there too, but we won't see those for another four or five years, just because we won't maintain or get ownership of those properties until then, but, yeah, I think we've got a lot of places. Considerations for the council is, obviously, if anybody came and complained at the city council meeting about nobody, or somebody not mowing their lawn, a formal recognition of no mow May, we stack is going to do exactly what we did last year, take a temporary approach to enforcement, and then know that at some point in the future, you're going to be talking about some ordinance changes to allow for these natural prairies to be burned.
And with that, be prepared for the people who are breathing complications to come forward in opposition of that, because that is why the council changed the burn ordinances in the past, to eliminate them within certain criteria. You have to get approval of neighbors within a certain distance, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's a double edged sword, just be aware of that.
To be fair, when I was a kid here, you could just rake leaves into the gutter and light them on fire, so, I mean, we kind of swung wildly from one side to the other.
And they used to be just asbestos in buildings.
Right, yeah. Advancement is a good thing to
And lead in paint.
I do believe there's, there's room to look at that ordinance, but again, Paul brings that good point, he owns that order, but the city others are gonna ask if this is a, and I'd say it's a part of trying to have our fire department
Yeah.
Burn specified areas versus somebody who's ranking these.
And burning September, October, and November versus two hours on one day.
So, we would still have to pick, pick our times, we wouldn't wanna do, everybody's wanting to go, no one does kind of like that, or running here fishing or so. But I think the takeaway here is, if you're in support of no mow May, that's, I just kind of need a head nod tonight, and then as far as the plantings, I think we're going to plant regardless. We could always mow prairies down and not necessarily burn them, but the problem with that is they, burning tends to help take care of the natural weeds, natural weeds, so.
So you're not looking for a motion or anything like that, just basically
No, I didn't ask you for a formal motion, I think, or last, last year
I'd be in favor of continuing this experiment that we started a year ago.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, just, you know, be mindful, you know, like, if we talk about, what is the old buffer zone, you know, buffer zone between you and your neighbors, I think that'd be, that'd go a long ways too. Just that's an acknowledgement, basically, that you, you're thinking about that too.
With your educational component besides the science, I'd encourage connection with the sun, also a presence of festivals if you can, if you need a method anyway to hand out the signage, unless you got one set up already, with more education community. I would mention that, I know Chris has met with three or four people from that committee about what designated areas for the city properties, the last, whole last, that happened a couple weeks ago, and in this, this same general area, I'm gonna include, I read up on B-Cid USA, so that's a hundred dollar investment that the city has to, 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 to You have enough direction there, Chris?
I do.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next is discussion, consideration of Cottonwood Department Site Plan, council action as needed.
So I included separately the planning commission report, they voted in favor of approving the site plan with the conditions in that report, basically they have some items that they need to fulfill, and the planning commission is recommending approval as long as they fill those, those items. This is a thirty unit complex, will be on the south side of Glenn Street as extended to the east. Glenn Street would be constructed, and then north south access to this, thirty would also be extended to that.
I attended the planning and zoning meeting that they had last week, and met both Chris Gold, you know, I think, and then Nick Vettis, who's from the construction company, I think, but Chris from CHI, Community Housing Initiative, offered to be at this meeting, and any, to one form or another, and I told him that shouldn't be too, so don't, don't receive word, lack of actions, lack of interest here, being a lack of interest. And that spoke very positively about initiative that, maybe back to Mayor Paul's era, with the REM housing, that was something that they were very positively impacted by with their organization, and my word has a starboard name there, so.
Very classy building, has three different design elements to it. I think it'll be a nice addition. And obviously fills a niche, being a senior, older modern complex.
Being able to point to this from all the housing commission people that are wondering what we've been doing, anything here, to see actually, see actually something happen. And the second thing is that it opens up an area of town that hadn't had any development. I mean, it's cornfield right now, but, you know, any other opportunities in that area once we get this establishment, we get the, the two streets connected and so on up here.
I would move for approval of the Cottonwood Department Site Plan as presented.
Thank you, Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Room second to move forward to the Cottonwood Department Site Plan, any questions? Lee is here, Paul's off the, any questions of urge, of her or Chris?
Yeah.
Four years to get us to this point?
About The rover.
Alvin's crew gonna be pouring the
I will say that he's been anxious to use that power screening, it just might be a little bit more than that.
Motion on the floor, Eric, we need to vote on, moving forward on the Cottonwood Department Site Plan, all of you, then motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Big vote there. Discussion consideration, change order seventeen on the police station iteration project.
As I said in my, my report, in the prior times, I get to tell you're getting money back, this is a credit of eleven hundred dollars.
I would move approval. State should renovate, renovations in amount of a credit of one thousand one hundred dollars.
I'll spend it all in one place.
It's already gone.
Yeah. I had to reread this a couple times, as the cop on the other, Chief Shannon, but the losses are gonna pop up, change orders to the basements. Room second to move forward with the change order number seventeen on the police station, all of you, then motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Special consideration of bond council engagement letter with Ayrus Cuni for the general obligation capital loan notes, series twenty twenty four. Council action as needed.
This is estimated to be about twenty one thousand seven hundred, just to be incorporated into bond proceeds. Not bad, considering we're borrowing north of four and a half, five million dollars. There's other filings that this has to deal with as far as new lending requirements. So, with that, we use all ours for all of our other borrowings, since I've been here and I've been happy with their work.
Any questions or ready for motion?
I'd move approval of the engagement letter with Ayrus and Cuni.
Paul, a second?
Second.
Paul, Mark. Room second to the floor for the bond council letter with Ayrus Cuni. If you have any questions, all of you, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last seven years, special consideration of operation or maintenance assistance agreement, Carico Aquatic Resources.
This is an amount of ninety thousand one hundred twenty five dollars, this is a normal expense that we have yearly, it's chemicals that go into pool, and then they provide expertise when we need it, so.
Has it changed much in the three years that they've worked with us?
I mean, it's gone.
Just normal?
Chemical prices have gone up.
Normal?
Yeah.
Okay. Your question landing, you want to add now? If you want to add, okay, it's
Just a one year deal.
Possibly all business.
Oh, possibly business. Is it a one year deal with the intention?
That's always the one year deal, right? They can, they'll never lock in, or re, another
Well, absolutely.
I would move to approve the pool maintenance contract for the chemicals and the company to rebuild.
Carico, in nineteen one twenty five.
Room second to move forward with the Carico Aquatic Resources, you've been here. All of you, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports, police reports. Chief Shannon?
Thank you, Mayor. The only additions I have beyond the report you have is, we, as we prepare to quickly end hopefully the construction project, and get things cleaned up and ready for you guys, we are planning, I've been talking with Chris a little bit, trying to do a, probably council meeting, starting there and then moving back up here, first part of April. I don't know if it'll be the first meeting or the second meeting, we'll get that ironed out as soon as they're, they're out of the building, but I will also be inviting Elizabeth and Council for that as well, so it'll be a joint start probably for that, just to take a council tour, in-depth kind of council tour of the facility, see what we've done, see what you've accomplished from that standpoint, and let you ask questions and kind of walk through the use of that, and get a good understanding of where it's at. And then, we're trying to identify also a public open house, a full open house, either during Police Week, or possibly Heritage Days, to let the community come in and check things out as well, and see what's, it's looking pretty amazing, and it's gonna be really good when it's done, so. Other than that, that's Other than that, that's all I've got unless you've got questions.
Post a meeting agenda for that meeting when that happens should reflect.
It will, absolutely. Yeah, we'll have to do the same thing with Lisbon.
Actually be before your meeting. We have public hearing requests that we already set. So for each of the meetings in April, so this open house will happen. We have the first or the fifteenth, but we have one that starts at six.
First.
First.
So yeah, with the new law changes on property tax, we have filed a public hearing, things that will happen. So probably the fifteenth, and it'll probably happen before the council member will have to be back here, obviously, by six thirty because we have public hearings that have already put in, notifications. So. But yes, there will be a agenda for me.
Maybe we can get a police escort to get you out of town.
I can pick you up, Scott.
So that's how we're planning it. We still have budget conversations.
A little dusty here. Public works, questions of Mr. Downs, thanks for the editorial. Do we own that robot?
No, it was a rental. It was a rental.
That thing will eat anything.
It's pretty unique and it's really nice to have, especially if we're doing anything close to like the water's edge or steep slopes, that sort of thing. So, yeah, it does a great job.
You don't want to be the first.
Well, we've hired goats in the past. Nothing else in public works? How about Marks and Rec? Mr. Sagers?
Nothing to add?
I was gonna, I was gonna add one thing, I guess. That's okay. Um, usually, the one thing I didn't add, because I didn't know it when I, well, I guess I did. I kind of forgot about it. But I know potholing is a big thing right now. We got a lot of spots in town that need some attention. Normally, L-pulling provides that material for us and they don't usually get out until it warms up enough. They did get some batching done and we did get a couple loads, but I just haven't had a chance to get out there yet with the guys. With spring break going on, I had a few guys gone and we're down one guy. As you know, we lost one of our staff members. And I was off myself for a little bit of time for some personal issues. So we're kind of getting back on track with spring and we do have material and we'll start addressing some of those street potholes. But yeah, nothing wrong with that.
Thank you, Ellen. She'll get to it when we can. Anything else from public works or Marks and Rec? Cole Library, Doug Race's report. After, there's always up there. And, and reports, chief blast presentation from the ambulance service.
All right.
We have multiple.
So I, I've asked, so first off, Jacob Lindauer with the Lisbon Humper and Ambulance Service. I just want to say that I've asked both cities to be on a short meeting, a short agenda. But it's been great discussion both times. So what I wanted to do tonight is just take the opportunity to get in front of you a little bit more. Normally I submit a written report, which doesn't necessarily give a ton of opportunity for back and forth, which is what I love. Anybody that's gotten cornered by me at the grocery store, anything like that, I can talk EMS all night if you want to be here. But I do encourage some back and forth and ask questions as, as you have them. But overall, what we kind of do is we take care of Lisbon and Mount Vernon. We're a lot of people's first contact with healthcare in an emergency setting. We currently operate two fully equipped ambulances at the critical care level or critical care capability, I should say. We are technically an EMT level minimum staffing with the option to flex up to critical care, which is the highest certification level within the state of Iowa. And we have been taking calls since nineteen seventy-four, although we were established in nineteen seventy-three. And last year, so we responded to nine hundred and ninety-two requests for service. We did have somewhere around one thousand fifteen requests. So the returned out requests would be things like interfacility transfers or calls that occurred in our district when we physically didn't have any ambulance available in that, in last year's case because of lack of units. So our mission, as always, is we want to make sure that we're providing the best care possible for our communities as well as surrounding areas. Because at the end of the day, you know, Lisbon and Mount Vernon are, are hard. But we do need to be mindful of our neighbors as well. And our vision is, you know, for lack of better words, to sum that up is to be the best. We firmly believe in the education, providing high quality care. So again, a little bit of information about us, maintain five oh one C three status in two thousand eighteen. Ultimately, our, our direction comes from all of you, who appoint our board of directors, four from each city as well as one volunteer representative. And you can see our, our current board of directors up there at this time. A little bit about our, our organization. So our medical director is Dr. Tony Carter, who works with Unity Point. He actually used to be a member of the ambulance service while he attended Cornell College. So he has a little bit of an intimate relationship with us. He firmly believes in our mission and vision for, for the future of the service and has been a great asset to serve, to the ambulance. So we're very fortunate to have him. So like I said, Dr. Carter is our medical director. Currently, when we look at our staffing, we have thirty-one paid on call or volunteer members, two part-time paramedics and myself as a full-time member to manage all of those calls and all of the scheduling holes. You can see our residents, primarily, we're very heavy on the Mount Vernon side right now between the city and Cornell as well as, as our Lisbon and out of town members that are tied and then a pretty good variety of certifications. We're very happy with our advanced EMTs. Over the last two years, the state has really given us a lot of freedom with that advanced EMT level. We'll talk about that a little bit more when we start talking about our flex staffing model and things of that nature. So some of our activity from two thousand twenty-three, so nine hundred and ninety-two dispatches of that, we transported six hundred and ninety-six times. The non-transports can be anything from standbys, cancellations, patient refusal. So we go, we evaluate fairly common with low, low speed car accidents where we may go and we may have two, three, four people that were involved in the accident and requesting some form of medical evaluation. And so that all applies, plays into our numbers. When we start looking at our, our response times, that's where we start tracking a lot of our metrics. It's kind of the first metric we track. Our goal is to be en route on an average of seven minutes from the time of call. We do have, we do track our ninety percent time, which nine minutes is a little higher than what I would like. I would like that to be a little bit closer to our, our median. The problem is, is we have days where we're out the door in about a minute and a half because everybody's hanging out at the station. And then we have days where people are coming from home. Maybe it's going to be a delayed response due to weather. So that's going to be the big impact between our, our median and our ninety percent. And you can kind of see our breakdown between primary unit responses, our backup unit responses, which just continually increase. We have four instances where we could have utilized a third ambulance. Paramedic intercepts, which would be where we go and jump in with somebody else's ambulance to provide a paramedic level of care. Transfer crews, that's going to be specifically for transfers from one hospital to another facility, whether that be another hospital, back to the, the care center, anything like that. And then standby crews would be for typically football games, whether that be Mount Vernon, Lisbon, Cornell, or other activities such as the rodeo down in Southland. You can kind of see our, our call breakdown over the last three years. So Mount Vernon is fairly consistently the, the bulk of the call folder, Lisbon following closely behind. And we've seen actually a fair amount of growth with the other category, specifically starting around two thousand twenty, when we started providing interfacility transports from Anamosa to other facilities just to back up their service while they were going through a staffing shortage. So our revenues, this, this graphic is a little bit skewed. We did receive a trust during fiscal year twenty-three, which offsets this. So our, our total revenue is typically between about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand a year on average. So you can see the bulk of that is going to be for ambulance billing. So that's going to be our, our bills to insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, bringing the bulk of the service, followed by grant, or sorry, donations, which usually makes up between thirty-five to sixty thousand, depending on the scope of the project, what we're asking for and different projects that we may look to get sponsored. And then city funding, as you guys have known over the last two years, has, has increased to help provide additional funding for staff positions.
If I'm understanding correctly, that thirty-two percent is skewed this year because of that?
Yep.
Okay, so that's a higher percentage.
Yep, so that's a little bit higher percentage. So, but it's, it's typically right around that fifteen to twenty percent mark. So.
Jake, looking east, down to thirty, how are those communities dealing with ambulance services? I mean, I think you're probably covered to the north of Anamosa in the strength of their hospital. To the west was the Cedar Rapids hospitals and Southland City hospitals.
Yeah, so when we look at, so one of the biggest parts of building an EMS system or your system development is looking at patient flows. And actually, along that highway thirty corridor, the majority of patients are actually flowing to Cedar Rapids or to Iowa City. There are a few go up to Jones Regional and Anamosa primarily due to capabilities. It's a great facility for stabilization and for, for basic treatment. However, if you require any additional services, so intensive care, cardiology, most surgeries, anything like that, they're going to have to facilitate transfer to Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Dubuque, Waterloo, Des Moines, wherever there's beds available. So, so actually, we receive a lot of the patient flow coming through Mount Vernon on Highway thirty. Does that answer your question?
Those communities' ability to staff ambulance services is what, is part of the question as much as anything. Are you getting pulled out farther and farther from your base territory to the east?
So, so over the last three years, we've seen a high use. We've become kind of that consistent friend. While others have dealt with maybe intermittent staffing, intermittent availability of those ALS resources, we've really been kind of that tried and true resource. So we have our, our core that we work with, I mean, almost weekly, which would be Mechanicsville and Stanwood. You know, we've built great relationships. There's a lot of back and forth. There's been the, you know, we've received services from Mechanicsville. They're a quickest mutual aid resource, but we do provide them a lot of paramedic support. Currently between the two agencies, they have one paramedic on staff or on, on their roster, which if anybody knows is Lonnie Coke, who's been around for a lot of years. I'm not going to guess because I'll get in trouble. But we do a lot of shared and joint training. So we've really built a system. They've recently, over the last year, approved the essential service legislation. So they're currently working through the process of developing a county ambulance. So unlike with Jones County who passed the essential service legislation two years ago, we actually receive a portion of that for the services we provide to Jones County. That's not going to be the case with Cedar County because they're going to divert all of those funds into one centralized ambulance service. And they're still working through what that's going to look like. I don't anticipate any changes for the next year or two. But I also don't know enough with some of the plans discussed to say, you know, what the final endpoint is for them. So, does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. But as far as ambulance response, they're fairly consistent. They can get a BLS, so a basic life support ambulance out the door. They actually have trained to advance EMTs. So we work with them to kind of get them working on protocols that are similar to ours. So now we can go and jump in and be like, you know, understand where they're at in the protocols and their, their treatments and help continue care for that patient. So.
You've already, you just answered one of my questions on slide twelve, whatever you're getting there. You said BLS means basic life support. ALS means what?
Advanced life support.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm sure I knew that at one point, but I've forgotten. So.
There used to be an ILS, which I still like to use, which is intermediate life support, which would be the, the advanced EMT, but I can trump it. Expenses, so the bulk of our expenses does come from staff and that would include myself part-time as well as the, the stipends paid out to the paid on call members, the volunteer members. And that also includes kind of the fringe benefits. So the training stipends, everybody receives X amount of money to, to continue their training every year as well as license renewals. All of that piece is, is kind of enveloped in the staffing. Administrative support, insurance, patient supplies, we've had some really good success that although patient supply are increasing, we've found or been able to diversify our, our suppliers where we're able to get some pretty good sales and deals on equipment as well as approaching our equipment rotation a little bit differently, which was actually a big, or in big part due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. You know, when all of a sudden you can't get something that's really important for nine months, you learn how to rotate your stock and make sure that you have enough on hand to, to get you through a shortage. So, and that vehicle maintenance. So this is the question I get all the time. You send a bill. Why can't you be self-sustaining? Why do we have to come to you and ask for help? Well, because we're an industry where we can charge whatever we want. I can put whatever numbers up there for our rates. And for about seventy percent of our customers, our patients, it doesn't matter. They're going, going to approve a rate that they're going to reimburse us and that's what we're going to take. So your Medicare rates, you can see what's going to be approved and then take another twenty percent of that roughly and, and that twenty percent is the patient responsibility. So there's one of three things that can happen. They have secondary insurance and the secondary insurance picks up that, that remaining twenty percent. The other piece is the patient pays that twenty percent or doesn't pay that twenty percent. Or the third case is they're actually dual Medicare and Medicaid and that twenty percent has to get written off. And then the same thing with Iowa Medicaid. That is our typical recovery and that's, that's where the buck stops. So when we look at our average cost per call with cost of readiness and basically everything but depreciation factor, then our average cost per call is about four hundred and ninety-one dollars.
You have this loss per call or?
Have a lot of cost.
Typical bill is thirteen twenty-four, but the, but our cost is four, would you say again?
Four ninety-one. So that's before we factor in depreciation. And what that unfortunately is making up for is when you look at any healthcare billing, what we're making up for is either the, the bill's not paid, the Medicaid rates, or, you know, we're fortunate that our overhead, our staffing costs are low enough that with Medicare, we are making that back to help supplement some of our other losses. So it's, it's unfortunately a game that we have to play in healthcare. And that's where we could do a whole one-hour talk on the triangle of EMS being public safety, healthcare and public health. Two of the three are subsidized and the other one is business. So where does EMS fall on that? A lot of people are asking that question right now. So. So when we look at our, our planning, we really didn't have a capital plan in place until about after two thousand twenty. We didn't really have funds set up to purchase ambulances, equipment that we were going to age out. Thankfully, our, our board, a lot, largely under the direction of, of Chief Shannon, along with the current members at the time, around the two thousand seventeen, eighteen timeframe, really started to look at where are we now, where do we need to be and what's our equipment going to look like? You know, that was basically my first project hitting the door. And thankfully, we've got to the point where we kind of have an idea of when is this equipment going to age out? How are we going to focus our grant funding? Where are we going to apply grant funds? And where are we going to be setting aside money to, to make these purchases happen? So we're not coming to you every five years saying, I need three hundred thousand dollars for an ambulance. With that, in this fiscal year, we have approved three hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of vehicle purchases. So we're going to be purchasing an ambulance at two hundred and seventy thousand as well as a replacement SUV at approximately, what, seventy thousand? So we're fortunate that through grant funding and set asides, we have that funding ready to go. It's actually going to get us a lower price on the chassis moving forward. So we were able to save some funding that way. And then over the next seven years, we're really going to turn our focus to space needs. What's that going to look like and what is that project going to be? What is it going to, going to look like for us, for the cities, for the, the community? And how are we going to achieve those spaces in the most efficiently possible? And then finally, we're always looking at becoming a consistent resource. There's a huge shortage of EMS providers right now. We're taking different approaches. We're taking different approaches, whether that be our cadet program to try to spear high school students into healthcare EMS as a career, looking at potential partnerships with different organizations on how can we share some of that funding to have ALS providers staffed and town-ready to go and be available? Because again, we, we really are that first medical contact, that entry into the healthcare system for a lot of the community. Some of the initiatives that ultimately grew into our strategic plan. So back in two thousand one TD, twenty-one, maybe? We were, the council agreed to donate a retired SUV from the police department to the ambulance service as a proof of concept. What this allowed us to prove is that we would in fact use an SUV. We can be more efficient in our responses, whether that be to paramedic intercepts, where we don't have to take an ambulance out of service, or community calls, where we can get advanced level providers there quicker and to the correct calls. So currently, our model is we are trying to get to the point where we are full-time staffing a paramedic in the SUV, as well as our ambulance at either an EMT or advanced EMT level. So what would happen is the paramedic is able to take the SUV home as a take-home car, on-call car. So instead of wasting the time to respond to the station and then to the scene, they're able to go directly to the scene. Or days that I'm in the office, now instead of waiting for the full crew to get to the office and then to go to the call, if it's a high-acuity call, I can now respond directly to the emergency, start providing that care, do an evaluation. And then, depending on the staffing on the ambulance, we may be able to turn over that care to the advanced EMT or the EMT who maybe doesn't have as much training, but that patient fits within their scope of practice. And now that leaves a resource in the community to respond to those second unit calls and be available for, for a patient that maybe is a little bit more in high acuity. There was about, I think it was three Sundays ago, we used this model three times. In the span of twenty-four hours, there were three simultaneous calls where within five minutes, we were dispatched with a second call. And we were able to use the staffing of both ambulances and the SUV to make sure that the paramedic went to the appropriate level call, the appropriate call that was going to require those resources, but both patients ultimately received an ambulance and an evaluation, so.
And you're saying that's what you're calling flexible staffing model?
Yep, the, the flex staffing.
And it's made possible with the SUV?
Yep, absolutely. You know, otherwise, you know, if we have a call out in, say, the Cedar Crest community over on Highway Thirty and Thirteen, if all of our crew members are on the ambulance, there's no way to get that paramedic or, or another resource back into town so that they can, you know, stand by for the second unit. Whereas with this, we can go out and we can make that call and, and break up the crew or, or make that coverage possible. So it's actually a model that is starting to catch on in Iowa. This is super popular on the East Coast, they've been doing it for years. They've had a paramedic shortage for about ten years before, we've experienced it, so they're pretty well-versed in these operations and how they work. So as we look to the, the growing community, we know our, our needs are going to be improved. So when we look at what training we can provide to our service members, currently we do pretty much all of our training out to the, the police department because we can't physically fit everybody in our training room. And that really puts a damper on us doing community education. Our goal is to start ramping up our CPR, stop-the-bleak courses, as well as some of the other advanced courses that we can offer to, to businesses in the, the community, which is oftentimes requiring us to go to them, move equipment, extra wear and tear on equipment, or finding an alternative spot for that training and education, as well as the addition of vehicles and equipment. You know, as our community grows, I like to say that we don't need three ambulances for response right now, but we need two. So when we have an ambulance that's down for more than a few hours for an oil change for, for long-term maintenance, it really hampers on our ability to respond. At the same point, that's where we start calling in on those relationships to Mechanicsville Stanwood, communicating what are your resources for the day? We're going to be down the truck, what's it going to look like if we have another call come in? And so that kind of gives us our strategic plan. So when you look at it, we really have our five pillars there. First and foremost, we want to make sure that we're providing good, high-quality care to our communities. We want to make sure that we are finding members to participate and that we are having a, really a, an environment that people want to be a part of. Make sure that we're being sustainable and utilizing city funds appropriately and for good projects. Make sure that we have continuity of operations. Should something happen, can we pick up and continue on? And looking at what our staffing needs to be to, to continue that, as well as what it would look like for us to become a leader in training in the region, which we, we kind of already are. So with the, the care, we want to make sure that our clinical guidelines, our protocols that are put in place by Dr. Carter are consistent with best practices. We don't want to be practicing old medicine, but we also don't want to be doing something that could potentially bring harm to patients. We want to make sure that we're enforcing those good habits and that good care with education for our crews. Make sure that we have advanced level providers that are able to mentor our EMTs, as well as other ALS providers, to provide that high level of care and make sure that we're doing good quality improvement processes within our PCRs to make sure that we are providing the appropriate level of care for our community. When we look at staffing, we want to make sure that we are not only finding new folks at a steady rate so that we can kind of continue to, to match our attrition, but we want to make sure that we're, we're rewarding and keeping those members that are, are seasoned and have been with us. They bring a lot of value through mentorship with experience with just kind of general EMS lore, you could call it. You know, it's, it's funny, they, they say in EMS, things come around about every six years, so you get rid of something, and then in six years, they're trying to sell it back to you. We want to make sure that we have a culture that people want to be a part of and people that people want to, to be with. So, and again, kind of looking at our, our spaces and accommodations. One of the semi-unique recruitment tools we've used is we have a couple of members that come to the station, were from home from the station. So they're, they're members, one's from Cedar Rapids, one's from Ely, and they'll come, they'll, they'll do their remote setup, but now they're in our community able to provide nine-one-one service during the day, which is a time when we're notoriously short, so. And then, like I said, sustainability. We want to make sure that we're utilizing funds appropriately, that we are finding diverse revenue streams, whether that be patient revenues, fundraising, making sure that people understand our needs, that, you know, we, we do need those donations yearly to help sustain our service for equipment replacement and to manage the growth. Anytime you're dealing with public safety, we know that the, the need far outpaces what you have in your reserves. So to, to approach that and, and secure that with fundraising has been huge the last four or five years. So and then make sure that not only are we able to continue to operate, that everybody understands what their role is and what their responsibilities are for the service. And finally, again, using that call data to build, run, or basically, public education courses, stroke care. Why does it benefit you to call an ambulance when you're having chest pain versus saying, well, the ambulance is going to take six minutes to get to me? If I throw my coat on really fast and drive eighty-five miles an hour to the hospital in St. Luke's, I can check in and register and then sit and wait thirty minutes for the cardiologist, where if you call us and we show up, we can call and alert the ER at the time of contact that we may have a, a heart patient and that cardiologist is now waiting for you in the hospital. Not that anybody would do that. But that's, that's the end of it. Like I said, it's a big overview. I do plan on being out in the community a little bit more this year, next year, sharing our message, sharing what our goals are. What questions do you have for me?
I don't have a question first. I want to say thank you. I've been involved in city government for twenty-four years now, in one way, shape, or form, and this is the best understanding of what you do that I've ever had, and I really appreciate it. And you're to be commended on bringing this together, and I would highly recommend community education, as I know you've got a plan, but boy, this is powerful.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's, you know, having the ability to stand up here and, and show the service overview and understanding where we're coming from, I, I feel is a very powerful tool. You know, we would, we love it when we can get people to the station and talk about just how fortunate we are. You know, when we start talking about equipment we've received through grants, things that we've been able to keep off of the, you know, off of the coffers basically, through good, hard, you know, fundraising, securing that equipment through alternative needs, things like that.
And I, I, from personal experience, I would encourage one of the key pieces of education for some of our elderly folks, you know, the, the, call nine-one-one, don't call your son or daughter first, because nine-one-one will help you much more quickly.
Yeah, well, so kind of along those lines, one of the metrics we're watching is when are we being involved in stroke symptoms? So if it's within four and a half hours, there's a good chance that we can take you to a local ER that can give you some medicine that'll help break up that clot if it's a clot and, and have very little deficits. Well, what we're finding through call review and metric review is, a lot of times, we're being called outside of that window, is, oh, I was a little weak, I, and had a headache, I thought I'd give it a few hours. Well, at hour five, we can't do that anymore, and your best option is, is a hospital you probably don't want to go to, but we're going to, to highly recommend regardless, so. Things like that are, are what we want to watch.
Well, and what strikes me when we get these reports, and I would echo Paul's sentiment, this is far and away the most detailed that we've seen, and I do appreciate it, just the sheer volume that you folks accomplish. And even knowing it, I wouldn't have guessed that you're at nearly a thousand calls.
So in two thousand seventeen, you did four hundred and fifty-two. Yeah, so.
And I think that's the biggest testament from being on the board for so long and just trying to work through. And it wasn't that long ago, I was coming to you with conversations about survivability, not sustainability. Are we going to have a service in six months or a year from that standpoint? Or do we need to look at different models or different options from that? And so I just want to publicly, you know, commend Jake and his work and the, the board's work on addressing some of those issues and getting us where we're at, that we truly survived through the pandemic and thrived through the pandemic with where it was at. And through Jake's reputation and, and the, the service's reputation, they are an identified, respected resource in the area. And so kind of going back to Tom's question, he, they, they do get pulled further because the paramedic levels and things like that are lacking in other areas. Anamosa's been a, a heavy pull for us sometimes, rolling through there, and it seems like we're going to different hospitals more frequently than we used to and things like that. So it's, it's good to be in a sustainable situation with reliable resources. Again, another, another thing that we are blessed in Mount Vernon to have that service, have his services available, and the, the level of paramedic service that we have is amazing, so.
And it's one thing to have three vehicles, and that's just writing checks, but to have three vehicles that, that you can staff and the staffing growth, that's what strikes me, the staffing growth in the time that I've been on council.
So I have to be very careful when I go to EMS association meetings, because we'll, we'll start going around the room and people will be talking about their crews at eight and maybe twelve, and then it gets to me in thirty-one, thirty-four, depending on how you look at it, and then I get a bunch of glares. So, so it's a huge testament to the culture that's, that our crew has been able to cultivate. You know, we, we are very education-focused, we want people to have a reason to be there and want to be there, and that's definitely been, been the case, so.
Thank you for your very professional presentation. Thank you, Jake, your assets to the community, and please pass on our thanks to all your thirty-four, thirty-one staff members.
More than eight.
Yeah, more than eight.
And the board. And the board, too, for taking a problem, point of sustainability to a point where it's at now, or, you know, survival is one basis of sustainability now. I would probably encourage you to also save your PowerPoint to maybe the sun, make sure you get all the details and get a whole breadth and depth of the story.
For sure. Yeah, I know, Nate, when I saw Walkin has been, been awesome about, you know, sharing our stories when we've had great successes and, and sharing challenges at the same time. So we appreciate the sun and everything they've done to, to help get our name out there and make people aware that we do have an ambulance and it is their ambulance, and they should be pretty prideful of that, so, thank you.
I think this calls for a round of applause.
We call Paul.
Well done.
Of course, Mayor, Council Administrator, I'm going to start with Craig on childcare. Do you, yeah, speak a little bit about that, give some speed on it?
Yeah, the Mount Vernon Lisbon Childcare Committee met a couple of weeks ago, and we meet monthly, every four to six weeks. And really, what this group has done is to ensure from a grassroots effort that we can count on high-quality, well-trained childcare providers through augmenting their wages. And so this group has, through grant and fundraising, distributed about fifty-five thousand dollars to Mount Vernon and Lisbon childcare providers associated with the school districts. And their next step, of course, is to sustain that, because providing bonuses or an extra couple of dollars an hour is wonderful, it's well-received. The childcare providers are very, very grateful to receive this, but it's not a one-shot deal. And so you have to continue in, in that process. There are actually the two forks in this road. One road is this grassroots effort that has been going on for a couple of years now and to help provide some additional resources and funding. Again, that's an annual thing, to, to, to provide those resources. The second road is to have something more permanent, and to have childcare facility in Mount Vernon Lisbon area that can house, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty children, before and after-school care, appropriate certified kitchen bathrooms and so on. There are a lot of challenges with that, and in fact, now that we're getting to about the year and a half or more anniversary of this group coming together on a grassroots basis, and now that we're beginning to have more long-term vision and view of childcare in Mount Vernon Lisbon, we are coming out together on April ninth at Cornell College for a, a large group meeting that will include members of the Lisbon City Council, members of the Lisbon School Board, members of Mount Vernon City Council, School Board. The Iowa Women's Conference will help lead the meeting. The mayor is going to help co-lead the meeting, or at least be a, a visible presence at that meeting as well. And what our hope is, is that we will be able to provide a little bit of history of what we've done in the last couple of years and what do we need to do moving forward to ensure that the grassroots effort continues at the same time that we are thinking more long-term. Is that what you're looking for?
That should do it. Is that a little enough? Thanks, Craig, for arranging this April ninth meeting, and.
Well, John Harp, Greg Batenhurst, Tom Weisler, Chris, obviously, has been a huge, huge part of this, and, and I've been fortunate to attend the meetings as well. It's a lot of value with, with the three largest employers. And we want to invite all council members, and if it, if we need positives, that's what, we welcome all, five if they want to attend, if they're available to attend that night. And the, the dynamics of having an official meeting are very brief. The idea is to have a discussion with all the players and get everyone up to speed equally on the process. And that's why, like, like Craig mentioned, I'll invite some Lisbon council and school board, and I want to make sure you're all on the way, too. And I'm speaking at the next Monday's School Board Open Comment Meeting, Open Comment Part of the meeting, to extend an invitation to all of them, to them as well, and we'll get it set up.
Nate, we're going to meet as a group in, oh, probably in about two weeks to finalize an agenda for this, but we'll make, it's, it's, it's April ninth, all prior in Cornell, six-thirty until eight-ish. Once the agenda is, is put together, that's the sole purpose of this meeting in about ten days, is to make sure that when we're getting a group together like this, that we have our, you know, T's crossed and I's dotted.
Thank you, Craig. One item, sustainability. We will probably be getting some more rain barrels, so I need to talk to Elton about possibly going to Cedar Rapids and picking up a, a couple dozen rain barrels. I think these may be coming from Big Grove Brewery, the donation, so probably distributing them at like Chalk, Chalkoak. Don't go there.
No, no, Scott's eyes light, light.
Well, they, last time they were sent, they were brought to us by Pepsi. I was disappointed that they weren't brought to us by Pepsi. It's like a lot of opportunities with bigger ones. I've taken a lot of opportunities with Big Grove.
Barrel will not come empty. And a chalk to walk, they're going to have to be empty.
You're welcome.
I thought you were going to say you were going for more rain. I want to say rain.
All three are desirable, but maybe requesting more rain barrels, I'll submit to either one of those days or the cleanup day, last weekend, last Saturday of April. Also, I've got in my garage about four dozen home energy kits. We'll come up with some method of distributing them and so on, but those are, it's not sustainability. From the mayor's side, I did attend local leaders on the Hill visiting Capitol two Wednesdays ago, spoke to City Gold in Charlotte McQuintock, and they will visit once after the session ends in another month or so. The conversation with them, it was a very busy day. And tomorrow, the conversation is about Cornell, I'm getting interviewed by someone from the Chronicle Higher Education about the relationship of a small town with a private college in it. So I've got some notes prepared for that interview tomorrow with the Chronicle, and I think that's all I had, talk about there. Any other council reports, comments from other meetings? Chris, you gave us an update about what you've got coming up. ALS Coalition, this is a follow-up to Stephanie's issue with regard to smoking, bacon and smoking establishments, which may be a moot point based upon what the legislature's been doing now with possibly looking at making some changes with CBD and all those items in that area. Your group, I am in line, quarter staff appreciation on Friday of this week. Anything else to share? Anything else that needs to come before this council? Otherwise, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. I'm glad.
Who's interviewing you?
I don't know.
Hi. Okay, now I got to turn this off.